And approval of previous minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes of August 8th, 2018.
So move.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Abstain.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Consideration of ordinances, public hearing and final consideration or none. Ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance 19-18 entitled "An Ordinance Amending Section 5-16 of the Code of the City of Long Branch and Providing for the Appointment of Long Branch Residents to Agency Advising Boards and Commissions." We've decided to postpone that.
Need a motion.
I need a motion to postpone. Second.
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
I wasn't listening.
Okay. Also, at this time, the public participation for resolutions and all general comments, I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Good evening, Mayor Pallone and council members. My name is Anita Crabley. I live at 161 Gary Drive in Long Branch. I would like to speak to all of you tonight about the Monmouth County Democrats Disability Caucus, which has been established to address and discuss issues of interest to people with disabilities and gain them a vote in all aspects of voting and the political process in Monmouth County. We will have our next meeting on Tuesday, September 4th, at the Central St. Medical Center in Freehold. We will be discussing voter registration for people with disabilities and a proposal for a federal disability policy office. We will also ask for volunteers to help us promote the Disability Caucus at an information table to be set up in Long Branch State on October 13th. I would also like to kindly ask if Mayor Pallone and the council members could be guest speakers at one of our upcoming meetings, which I would like to have in Long Branch, if possible. The Disability Caucus is a part and necessary forum for people with disabilities, their families, and people who work in the disability field to discuss and get involved in voting registration and other issues to encourage involvement in the political process. If anyone has any questions and/or would like to get involved in the Disability Caucus, please let me know either after I speak or after the meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Arlyn Josephs. I live on Von Court in Long Branch. First of all, I'd like to congratulate everybody on the wonderful win. I've been away most of the summer, so I haven't seen too much of anybody. But since I'm back home, and I'm a beach lover, that's why I live in Long Branch, I would like to know if it's possible if we can keep the lockers beyond Labor Day on the beach. Since most of the people that live in town that use the lockers, September's our best month, so...
Arlyn, you have a lot, you have a locker?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know, was that ever considered?
I would defer to Stan. It gets into hurricane season, I know it's difficult.
Our plan is to keep the lockers in the Gambit on the beach till, like, the second week of September. Because that's when the lifeguards will be working to, um, random beaches and stuff like that, where they'll stop the Labor Day. So you should have it through the second week.
Provided the weather's, the weather's good.
If the weather's nice, we'll try to do it for you, but then I gotta get them off because I know the crew that works there goes into, it's just still plastic, those things, the drugs, right?
I understand that.
But you'll definitely go after Labor Day, providing you don't get a storm along the coast, and that's all.
Okay. Well, so, and I want to tell Stan that the beaches have been immaculate this summer. Just watching, they pick up the garbage. People, I guess, are being much more respectful, so the beaches are left very, very clean. And I think it's wonderful that on West End Beach, the lifeguard stays till practically seven o'clock, especially on a hot day. I mean, I'm off the beach earlier, but it's really nice to see people come home from work, and the locals being able to enjoy and swim. The second thing I have to say, and this is very strange, yesterday I dropped off an old television on the recycling place on Jolene Avenue, and after seeing the article in the paper on recycling about, don't put plastic in recycling, and living in the summer a bunch, among a bunch of New Yorkers and part-timers, it's gotten very confusing about what is recyclable and what isn't. I spoke to the gentleman at the recycling plant, and it seems like I'm recycling all the wrong stuff. So I think it would be of value to the residents if we know what we're putting out, if we're putting out the wrong stuff or not. I mean, he just said you could put out a bottle and a can, that's it. I had my family for 10 days, I've had four cans of recycling, and I don't know if I'm doing it right or wrong.
I believe the rules and regulations are on the, on the city website.
Okay.
And we update them regularly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Request one-minute notification, Vincent Lepore, 33 Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Three quick things. I would like the council to start considering, and I'm going to follow through with a letter on this, to bring back the car show to Father's Day. It was changed in the Schneider administration so as to allow public employees to enjoy the holiday. I'd like to have the attitude in this city again, that public servants are public servants for the public, and that Father's Day should be restored for the residents of Long Branch and others elsewhere. A longtime tradition restored. On July 2nd, I sent the council a letter. The letter concerned a resolution amending 29217 concerning your changing of council dates. I requested the, in this letter of July 2nd, that the workshop sessions have a public portion. In your executive sessions, I see there's a discussion about the Open Public Meetings Act. If council needs to be guided, they can be guided by West Long Branch and neighboring communities, which have very excellent templates as far as the public participation in council workshop sessions. And thirdly, in the auditor's report, which you discussed in the workshop, I'm certain the auditor didn't go anywhere near this, but I will, page 116, on the General Capital Fund Schedule of Deferred Charges to Future Taxation, with emphasis unfunded. Okay? Thirty-seven million, five hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. It's quite a load. The line item on that page 116 is the purchase of real property, four million, ninety-five thousand dollars. For you to know, that's the Chandler Maps property. I just hope this city doesn't continue to land bank that property for Charles Kushner at the same time deriving parking revenue on it, which the auditor's report, page 16, will show clearly. I'm going to follow through with a letter on that. On July, on August 13th, I sent a letter to council. That letter discussed Title 40, 4825, the Municipal Investigation Committee power to issue subpoenas. In the letter, I asked what the timeframe of the council would be, and I asked you to consult with Greg LaLevy of Stronger Foundations, co-chair of the Pallone Transition Team, who cited in a mailer for Stronger Foundations, an affiliate of Greg LaLevy, quote, "corruption in City Hall." Council, to date, I have not received a response to that letter. It was stamped "received" August 13th. Council, I'm going to ask a question, and I appreciate if I'm not interrupted by the I called at a prior meeting for this council to issue subpoenas to Adam Schneider and officials of the Schneider administration. So tonight, I'm going to ask it again. However, we're going to make it worth your while, because I'm telling the council tonight on the public record, Solomon Dweck is available to this council to be subpoenaed to give testimony on Adam Schneider and officials in the Schneider administration concerning public official corruption. Now, the answer, the question is as straightforward as can be, and the answer will be as straightforward as could be, yes or no. I'm going to ask each council member, will you issue subpoenas to Solomon Dweck in questioning on public official corruption concerning Adam Schneider and officials in the Schneider administration? Mr. Dangler?
Mr. Lepore, as council president, we've addressed this issue, and you've received our response, and I'm talking, speaking for the rest of the council, we will not respond to your question this evening. You've already received our response.
No, I received a response and a letter from the attorney saying he addressed the issue at a council meeting, but I never got an answer from the council.
You have gotten your answer.
No, I did not get an answer. I got a response, but not an answer, as to why not.
Mr. Lepore, I don't think you wanted to hear the response. It wasn't the way you would like us to respond to you, but our response is that we will not, we are not legally bound to do what you want us to do, and we will not investigate.
That is wrong.
No.
That is completely wrong. By New Jersey Code Title 40, 4825, you have that power on civil, financial, or criminal. Should during the investigation, and Mr. Raynaud, I don't want you interrupted, should you, in that investigation of a subpoena, discover criminal activity, you would notify the state attorney general and the county prosecutor. Nothing's withholding you from finding out information, civilly or financially, about public officials in the Schneider administration or Adam Schneider himself.
I know, Mr. Lepore, I know you don't want, want to hear from me. I have the statute in front of me. That's the statute that gives council the authority to issue subpoenas, but you can't just add words to things.
Oh, who's adding words?
The words "civil, financial, or criminal" don't appear in that statute, because, because what you don't...
It says "any."
What you...
What is your interpretation of "any," then?
It's a legislative investigation, not a criminal investigation, so if you read the cases that interpreted, you would know that, but you would also know, if you understood the law, that this is not the law that gives council the authority to conduct an investigation. That's in the FAWK Act. This is just the authority to issue a subpoena to compel a witness. So the authority to conduct an investigation is not in this statute.
You're the only legal person I've heard that's said that. Your legal does not corroborate with the legal authorities I have consulted on this matter.
Mr. Lepore, your time is up. Thank you.
Well, then, the council's a bunch of yellow-bellied, gutless cowards. If you're not going to go through on this title on the power you have to investigate corruption, all right? I don't know what you ran on to get here, Team Pallone, but if you're not going to clean City Hall up of corruption, you see the door, you might as well leave now.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, council members, Mayor Pallone.
Good evening.
Renee, can you just lower the mic a little bit?
I said, "Good evening, council members and Mayor Pallone." I have an issue about cable and internet access for the Gregory, and I think I probably mentioned it to Dr. Selly, and I've typed it up here. I think I'm better at typing than I am at speaking. Everyone at the Gregory, which is comprised of about four buildings, that is over 200 seniors living on fixed incomes, they're not wealthy seniors, and none of us are. I happen to be one of the seniors that can afford cable. There are many seniors whose quality of life, in my opinion, and theirs too, is greatly hampered by the fact that they cannot afford internet with, what's that company? Comcast. I have to say that I have spoken to them personally about, about this matter and gotten nowhere. They were given exclusive rights to all four buildings. That's more than 200 individuals that didn't get the, a fair selection, and Comcast doesn't have to compete for their services, so they're locked into Xfinity. What Xfinity didn't do is, if they were going to have four buildings and over 200 people, is offer a group rate, lower the fact, lower the, the monthly cost for seniors so that everybody could have internet access. I think that's only fair, given that they were basically handed over 200 accounts non-competitively. And I don't even know if that's legal for them to have, you know, because you, there's no other choice. And I think Dr. Selly shared with me that in Long Branch, there is no choice with cable but Comcast. I don't know if that's true, you have to, well, if you have a private home, you can have a dish, but you can't, you, you, we're in a rental complex, you can't put a dish. So there are seniors in, in the building that have had it and lost it because they mainly cannot keep up with the cost of having Xfinity. I, I just think that, you know, a major corporation, and they are multi-billion dollar corporation, they could have afforded to be more gracious with people over 62 living on a, on a fixed income. So they were handed over 200 accounts, all, each, as though they were separate houses, all paying the full rate, rather than say, "Okay, Comcast, you want these four buildings? What are you going to offer us?" I guess that's the same way I thought about the buildings on, condos on Ocean Avenue. We should have got a Y out of that deal, but the horses out of the barn on that one. But anyway, that's all I have to say. I'm going to continue to work on a meeting with, figuring out, or trying to help figure out, the bicycle trails, which I think is, I passed on to Dr. Voight. Did you, what, did you find it helpful at all?
Pardon me?
Did you find it helpful at all?
Yeah, I have...
Okay. I did speak to Seed, Shore, Shore and Grow LLC. It's a new company, a couple of young guys own it on Route 35. They mentioned to me, of course, it's too late for this season, that next season, they would be willing to sponsor one of the gardens, I guess Liberty Avenue or Sayer's, and I think Sayer's is Long Branch property. And it, you know, they sell the products, obviously, so something for them is that they get their name out there and they sell hydroponics, but they'd be also willing to sponsor one of those gardens for the community, turning it over, showing people how to use the concept of hydroponics. So that's something that's on the table for, I'd love to see, for next year, and they're very willing to want to open that up to them, and I'm going to, thank you.
Yield my remaining minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience?
Renee, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I just wanted to make an announcement. Avery Grant asked if I would put it on public record that on Sunday, at St. Luke's Church on Broadway, Long Branch, at 3:00 PM, there is a memorial, community memorial, everyone is welcome, for Aretha Franklin. Thank you.
Patty, would you, if you're talking to Avery, would you tell him that, you know, he left me a message, and I left him a message back, but I hadn't heard back from him?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
There's another one for John.
Ernest Magnoli, born in Long Branch, live in Asbury Park.
Renee, could you raise the mic just a little bit, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Normally, I just like to make a presentation, but tonight, I'm going to actually implore the council and help of the group before me. There is a city employee who has embarked for the last, probably, few years, but most tragically and perniciously, the last few weeks, months, yesterday, today, with what is summarized in four police reports to the Long Branch Police. It names a city official, a fireman, in other capacities in the city, that is perpetrating this. I guess we're all aware in today's world that when you perpetrate things on Facebook public, it's available to between two and three billion people. There have been threats against my family, myself, my integrity, my health, my well-being, my finances, my work, et cetera, et cetera. And I would like to say that most of this exacerbated after I took, as a non-resident of Long Branch, a position in the last election, May 8th, and fortunately, everyone that I supported is sitting before me, which is a good thing. But what I didn't expect was the, I'm not sure what to call it. Let's call it retaliation, let's call it go after, let's call it payback, and I'm subject to that, and it's crossing, actually, two cities. Is there a timer somewhere that I could see?
Yeah, we, you have three minutes.
Three? Okay. It's, it's crossing the only two cities in, in Monmouth County, Asbury Park and Long Branch. I live in Asbury Park, I was born here. I have a lot of involvement in both cities, family and other. So there's been a horrible cascade since the election. I am not a Facebook friend with anyone here. I'm not a Facebook friend with anyone. I just basically like to do news stories, I like to get involved in politics, I like to get involved in civic matters, and I'm most, most interested in school matters, in children, et cetera, and, and public safety. But sometimes, when you take a position, what appears to be that you're either supporting or advocating for certain people, you then set off a torrent of other people who believe that you are some kind of enemy. And I must say that although I'm glad you're all here, I never really supported you as, as people, as, as a person, but what you stand for and what you, what you're able to do for the city. But that's not how it's being construed. I mean, I'm getting emails and call, I'm getting calls that, I'm following people's children to school, I'm going to get arrested tomorrow, they're filling out the paperwork in the firehouse and in the police department, they're coming with the handcuffs, they're going to publish some list that they claim they have of medications and things. Of course, zero facts, but horribly harassing and crossing over into criminal, and I have copied the city attorney. Now, I, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm asking your council, because we're all citizens of Monmouth County and New Jersey. So far, I'm receiving, Facebook isn't shutting it down, which I think they should, but I consulted with an attorney who said if Facebook's not shutting it down, then it's like ongoing, it's part of the two-C clause of ongoing and continuous harassing and even in criminal aspects. But what I'm imploring here, and why I'm here, is because you, you do realize, when someone is using city equipment, city telephones, city servers, at longbranch.org, email addresses, et cetera, making references, wearing city emblems, firemen or police, and they're making these hard statements, I, am I correct, city council, that it places the city at risk? In other words, within the purview of time of working and in uniform, they now somehow bring in the city as well as, I mean, places the victim as well as the employee, as well as the city at risk. And I know, I know for sure that when you came to this position, Mr. City Council, that you saw 28 years of horrible litigation, where this city and taxpayer have gone through horrible settlements and things, and many of them promulgated by faulty employees, theft of service, horrible things. And I know, and I know that it's...
Your time is up.
Okay, time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Lilian Grauman, 396 Second Avenue, Long Branch, mayor, council. Just some infrastructure questions, because I saw on the board, you're doing some drainage work on Edwards Avenue, was that what I saw? Right? Are there other areas that are going to be addressed? I mean, Long Branch Avenue by the old trestle, which I think has flooded since I can remember, Second Avenue, West End has gotten really bad, Morel Street and Bath Avenue. I know if I'm coming back from North Long Branch, I have to kind of dodge to get back to Second, so I'll just go down Liberty and Broadway, and again, the trestle in Elbron.
Lilian, there's our, our city engineers who are here today, actually, just last week, did a tour, obviously relatively new to the city, so they did a tour with Mr. Zubba around the city of, in addition to all the, all the spots you're talking about.
Right.
Those that are on the list to be addressed, which we started several years ago to put in place.
Okay. That was pretty much it.
You know, we try, we try, we're trying to address them...
It's difficult.
As we can. I mean, some, you know, what can we get done for...
Right.
You know, the money that we have and...
Right.
The grants that we've been lucky enough to receive, where they're best...
Right.
You know, put in place to get the most...
Long Branch Avenue by the old trestle has been flooding, like I said, since I can remember. It's just something that, and listen, it's, it's going to take time as we keep building, and, you know, I'm sure, once we, new buildings go up, the infrastructure will get better. So, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? So I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting.
So move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda?
So move.
Motion?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. There are no applications, and at this time, for Ms. Lenny's business, for the good of the order, Councilman Dangler?
The only thing I have to report is, as, as I did at the workshop, was to, to say I met, I was part of meeting with Mr. Kushner and his team, and they were very thorough. I was part of a meeting with Mr. Kushner and his team, and they were very thorough. The engineer did a great job of explaining how the pier would look if we decide. There was no decisions made, so I would just like to give credit for that. And we've had two different renderings, one like close to, over 100 million, and one half that. So again, it's not the decision was made, but I do just appreciate the fact that I was able to make the meeting, but get a clear understanding on how a pier would withstand another hurricane sanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Viera?
I want to thank everybody for coming. Keep coming, we need you guys over here. And I also reviewed, I didn't get a chance to make the meeting, what Bill explained, and I reviewed, and I kind of liked our review, so it looks pretty good, and we're going to go forward with it, and no decisions have been made, but we're going to be looking into that.
Councilman Voight?
So I just want to say, if you had a chance this past, what was it, Saturday or Sunday, to attend Surf for Vision, just want to give a shout out to them for the amazing work that they do. It's an organization that is working with people who are blind and/or deaf, and they give them an experience of taking them out in the ocean and actually getting them on surfboards. Our very own councilman, Mario Viera, volunteered the whole day. It was so, and the mayor was there, it was such an exhilarating opportunity, just to see people who never thought they would be able to have an experience like that. It was incredible. When it comes around next year, make sure you go, because the work that they do is just spectacular.
Thank you. Councilman Selly?
I have two things I'd like to say tonight. First of all, I'd like to remind everybody, Saturday on the Great Lawn is the Jazz and Blues Festival from 1 to, I believe it's 10 o'clock. Lots of good music. Come out, support the vendors that are going to be on the boardwalk. And I also, believe it or not, I'm going to wish everybody a happy Labor Day. Can you believe it? The summer is almost over, so we don't have another council meeting before it, so I'll wish everybody have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pallone?
Just like to thank everybody for coming and your comments today. It's great to see you. Thank you.
And I would like to say the Ray Lucato Swim was postponed until Sunday, so if you can attend, that would be great.
Saturday.
Saturday, I'm sorry.
Saturday.
Saturday. Apologize. And I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening and for your participation, and we look forward to seeing you in two weeks. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second. Thank you.